So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of Whole to Order, and I'll just start out by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Wssanich people. Committee, you've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or amendments?
Move approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second. So that's moved and seconded. I'll call a question. All in favor? Posed? That's carried. Moving on then, our first item is a presentation by Habitat for Humanity, potential opportunities, and presentations by Yolanda Meyer, the CEO. You have the floor. Could you push the button on the microphone? Red light will come on. Yep.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, let me thank council so much and mayor for inviting me to come and present to you today. What I want to do is just to give you a very quick overview of what Habitat for Humanity stands for, what it's trying to achieve, and what might be possible here in Sydney. Habitat for Humanity is an organization that's about bringing communities together to help families build strength, independence, and stability through affordable homeownership. So, we're an equity-based model. What a lot of people don't realize is that there are fifty-five affiliates across the country that function under an umbrella agreement, but we are autonomous. So, how we deliver our program here might be materially different than how it's delivered in Prince Edward Island, and that makes sense because our challenges are different. So, what we're trying to do here is to mobilize the community and volunteers to help us build safe, decent, and affordable housing. Ours is an equity-based solution. Currently, it's through a homeownership model that may adapt, but will always have an equity component, meaning that the families are building equity in their home for as long as they willing or want to live there. A lot of people are aware that Habitat is the builder of homes, but I think what a lot of people don't know is that we are the lender, and that is, in fact, how the model works. We sell the homes at market value, but it's only made possible because our lending, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. The first thing that we obviously need to do is to secure an opportunity, and once we've done that, and I'm going to talk a little bit about a couple of opportunities that are close to Sydney, we search for qualified families. And qualified families have to meet several criteria, one of which is that they obviously need to be living in need, and that is quite often defined by the fact that they are low-income. They also, at the same time that they're living in need, have to have the ability to pay a mortgage, property taxes, perhaps a strata fee. So, it's an interesting sort of range of incomes that we focus on. It is not the type of low, low income that a lot of people think that we're focused on. It's not for people who are currently homeless or at risk of homelessness. This is for working people who have a regular income that fits our criteria, that can handle the responsibilities of homeownership. And the final part of that equation is their willingness to partner with Habitat, which is demonstrated through five hundred hours of sweat equity and also being ambassadors for the program. So, for example, when we do our Ginger Bay Showcase fundraiser, then families will be there helping out, as well as at other events. Couple other key criteria that people are usually interested in: you must be a Canadian citizen or a permanent resident. You must have lived in the CRD for at least two years, so you can't just have arrived. And in our instance, and this is not true of all affiliates in the country, you must have a minor child under the age of ten. And that's because the studies have shown the profound impact on health and educational outcomes for children that have stable upbringing with their housing. So, we have so few opportunities that we're able to offer. We want to maximize those opportunities by focusing on people with younger children, who can really benefit from the security and the stability that we can bring. We typically build homes that are multifamily. Here's one example. This is the one on Mackenzie and Cedar Hill Cross Road. It's going to be a two-level home with three bedrooms, one point five baths. It's going to be roughly in the neighborhood of thirteen hundred square feet. There's probably going to be a shared yard, and there's not going to be, unless it's by design and what we're participating in, a garage or a carport, there's going to be a shared parking area. So, again, just to reiterate, they're purchasing their home, they're not tenants. They become the person who is paying the property taxes and becomes invested then in their community. It's a very different mindset, we find, than affordable rental and subsidy situations. So, I mentioned earlier that it is the mortgage terms that make it affordable, no money down. Obviously, that's a huge game changer, because even trying to find five percent nowadays is a barrier to a lot of people. And if you only have five percent, you have to qualify for ninety-five percent in a lending, and you're just probably not going to. And then, when we lend you this funding, we lend it to you interest-free. Amortization does not matter. It could take you thirty-seven, forty-seven years. It doesn't matter the whole time you're building equity. And every year, we sit down and we look at the family's financial situation, and we calculate the payments to be no more than thirty percent of their gross household income. So, in this way is what we make it affordable. The interesting and really magical thing about Habitat is that it is a real pay-it-forward model as well. While families are paying their mortgages and building equity in their home, we use that funding until such a time that we purchase the home back from them to seed-finance our next home. So, when you're a family paying a Habitat mortgage, not only are you building equity and stability for your own family, you're helping to provide that possibility for future families, which I think is a really powerful, powerful thing. In the past, Habitat for Humanity allowed the inventory to eventually leave in twenty or twenty-five years, because house purchases were at a price where families could possibly pay that off. Remember, when you're only paying principal and no interest, you're paying it down at an accelerated rate. Now that the housing prices have risen to the point they are, Habitat families will never fully repay that first mortgage. And even if they did, they would not participate in the market. Instead, what would happen is Habitat would take the home back into its inventory only when the family wants to leave, and they would have all of that equity and then hopefully be able to maybe port into the market if they were living in a three-bedroom Habitat home with their children now grown, and now maybe they can afford to move into a one-bedroom condominium, because they don't need what they needed before when their children were there. So, that's where I was talking a little bit about how that was not the model before. From now on, Habitat housing will remain in our inventory. It's been too difficult and too challenging to get the inventory, so we don't want the lift that happens in the market to benefit a very, very few people, but instead to come back into the charity and into the program to enable us to serve multiple families with the same home. Another thing that's happened with the projects that we have coming up is that the municipalities have also placed affordable housing agreements on the land to limit it for a period of twenty-five years to remain in the affordable housing pool, which has affected our model as well. This is just a quick overview of our history. We've built in a number of different places, and I'm going to show you the picture of the one that was here in Sydney, because we have built six homes here in Sydney. This is the Rust Haven project. Does everyone, has everyone seen it? So, those were six homes, one duplex and four single-family homes. One of the single-family homes did leave the inventory, but the other five homes are still Habitat homes, and it's been a real success story. Two of those homes have had, they're in a second generation of Habitat families. We just recently completed, or before, as I mentioned earlier, land has been a big challenge. And historically, we had donated land, and I'm certainly here today to see if that opportunity exists within your town of Sydney. But the other thing that I've been doing, given how, we simply can't compete in the real estate market against developers who have much deeper pockets and much more sophisticated lending arrangements. So, instead, what I've been doing is working with them as part of requirements by councils to have an affordable housing component, and it's been very successful. I have had four different developers now working with me. One of those projects is completed in Central Wssanich recently, another one's about to start, and then I think some of you are aware of the ten-unit one that we have coming up. And so, this is the one that we just finished in Central Wssanich. One unit donated as part of ten, fully serviced land donated, and the developer built it at cost. We're about to do the same thing again on VNS. Developer is donating a serviced lot and going to help us build it at cost. And then, we have the ten units that's just outside of Sydney. This one is going to be ours. The land is being donated, again, serviced land donated by the developer. So, this is an amazing thing, and I actually won an award in Canada at Habitat for these partnerships that we've brokered, because no one else has put together this kind of deal where we're having the concurrent delivery of affordable housing with the market housing. So, rather than having it pool in a fund, because the developer's putting money into something, they're helping us actually build it, but they don't have an ongoing stress or obligation related to it. We self-generate all of our own operational overhead through our restores. Our restores are very successful. We have three now, which means that a hundred percent of the donations that come to us go into our build program. So, that's a very quick and dirty overview of what we're up to. What I will say is that I made a presentation in Sydney to invite families to participate in putting an inquiry in, and we were overwhelmed. We had three hundred people sign up to come to our information center, and more than one hundred viable expressions of interest have come that we're now trying to cull down to ten possible families that will be looking at purchasing one of these homes. Are there any questions?
Any questions from committee? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned in a conversation that we had at another presentation that you've also been involved in condominium projects, where there's the, there would be, could be the opportunity to participate in a condominium. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, whether we are getting the donated land and then working with a developer to build something at cost, or we are acquiring a unit within a condominium, it doesn't, it does, as long as the financial metrics can work for us, then we would be interested. We haven't yet brokered one of those partnerships, but I anticipate that we will in the future, because this same model of, you know, one in twenty or one in eighteen units be an affordable house could be the same thing if you had a twenty-unit or sixty-unit condominium complex going in. Then, there's no reason why ten percent of those units couldn't be Habitat units, as long as that was part of the rezoning from the get-go, and the developer and Habitat and the municipality arranged at what would be the purchase price, presumably cost, for those units. And so, that would be exciting for us.
So, just a follow-up. So, the difference between a single-family or duplex townhouse, townhomes to a condo is that you acquire the land, as you've given a couple of examples, then you are the developer, so you build the home. In the case of a condo, the land value, the equivalent land value could be, could be worked out, but you're not the developer. So, again, it would just be a development cost attached to it. I mean, the developer would build it, and then you would pay that separately.
Yeah, we would effectively purchase the units from the developer at a, at a cost that was agreeable, well below market, obviously. And there may also be some opportunity where they would bring it to a certain finishing stage, and then Habitat would come in. It might be the case that they're putting in solid surface countertops and high-end appliance packages, and we wouldn't do that. But to the outside world, it wouldn't be different at all. And the beauty of Habitat brokering this relationship is that we are the ones who can be the guardians of the transactions over time. That's where a lot of, I think, affordable homeownership programs that have been tried to be managed by municipalities have broken down, is that it's all great upfront. It's just what happens in the transaction in the future. Sometimes, they're selling them below market, but then who, who adjudicates who qualifies for that home in the future, and there's been a lot of challenges, and that's what Habitat does. And the other great thing about in a condo situation is the homeowner is a strata member like everybody else, so there isn't any differentiation in terms of their experience of being part of the condominium. So, I can absolutely see it working. It will just come down to the numbers. You know, this slide, sorry, this slide is also about, you know, big or small, Habitat can kind of fall in into a number of niches. So, we can be a handful of units in a condominium. We could be the single-family home, or we could be two units in a twenty-unit townhome. There's a lot of different ways in which we could, could fit in. And in coming here, I would ask council to consider, when you're looking at proposals or know that they're coming, if you, I don't know, actually, if you have a requirement that there be an affordable housing component in your developments. But every situation's different and unique, so it's a blanket policy is difficult. But if you say to the developer, "We would like you to partner with Habitat on seeing what's possible," then we would come to the table and be very excited about that, in addition to whether or not the town of Sydney itself has any opportunities that we could look at directly.
We do, if I might, Chair?
Go.
We do have affordable housing certainly as a strategy in our, in our strategic plan, and we'll be going back into, it's almost been a year now, we'll be going into those, updating our strategic plan in the coming weeks. And I would certainly look forward to the opportunity to, you know, to present this as an option for consideration. I am aware of in some areas of Sydney where we do have some vacant town-owned property in a residential area. Now, at the creation of the subdivision, that was created for a purpose, but I think, you know, it might be something that we can consider.
It's exciting.
It's, it's a unique opportunity compared to the other affordable nonprofit organizations. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think you need the whole continuum, and that's, you know, we see ourselves on the other end of the continuum than a lot of the affordable rental providers do, but still in a very important niche in that whole arena.
Any further, go ahead.
Thank you. Do you, or perhaps any other Habitat group, ever looked at, like, retroactive purchases? Do people ever donate, say, before, you know, not just land that gets built on, but say, their house or their, or a part of their development to Habitat for Humanity to then administer as affordable housing?
I can't speak for some of the other affiliates. I do know that Habitat has a program in some parts of the country where they refurbish homes, but that's usually for somebody who lives in the home that might have a special need that they can't afford to fix, or they might have someone who needs accessibility or things like that. If someone were to look at donating a home to Habitat, we would need to consider whether or not that home could, you know, highest and best use would be as an affordable Habitat home versus liquidating it and instead putting that towards a different project, which is, to be honest, what happened to the one of the six homes in Sydney, was that we were able to use the proceeds of that home sale, which was Habitat's, not the family, to produce the four units that you saw on Mackenzie and Cedar Hill. For a variety of reasons, that was a decision that we needed to make. So, we would look at every situation, but, you know, I would certainly be delighted to have someone donate their, their home to us, and then we would evaluate it from there. It's funny, someone's recently interviewed me about that.
She said it on the video. Everyone's.
By all means, you know, if you're looking at your estate planning, and, in fact, this, the six units were built on land that was a privately donated donor that happened, where the family had accumulated a certain amount of wealth, and so, all they wanted was what they had paid for it, you know, maybe fifty years ago. So, all of the capital gain was a donation to Habitat, and they got a tax receipt for it. So, there's obviously financial benefit to them, but they wanted, they really believed in, in what we were doing. And interestingly enough, at the time that we were going to sell one of those homes, I reached out to the family, and the parents had passed away, and I met their son. And last year, he came to Habitat, having retired from his job as a civilian in the military and now works for Habitat. So, his family donated the land for Gregory Place in Sydney, and he never forgot about that, and now he's come full circle, and he works for us, and he's working on the build program for me. So, that's pretty cool, I think, when that happens. So, yeah.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, we'll move on to item four A, which is a staff report on our Advisory Planning Commission bylaw number twenty-one eighty-one. And committee, you have the staff report in front of you. What's your pleasure?
I'll move that the Advisory Planning Commission bylaw number two-zero-one-eight-one be forwarded to council for consideration of first three readings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, in discussion. I'll start with Councilor Duncan, then Councilor O'Keefe.
Thank you. And I passed out to all of you before you. I had changes that I thought to recommend based on one of staff's suggested changes to membership, section five point one, where they have added the possibility of perhaps one member under thirty-five years of age to our existing two members with professional design qualifications, one member with professional environmental background, and one member with professional heritage background, and then the rest being members of the community at large. I brought this up actually at a Strong Towns meeting on Friday with a bunch of planners and architects and people, people there, other counselors, and said, "If you had the option, if you had something you could add to an advisory planning commission, a different type of membership category, what would it be?" And one of the answers I had got was somebody who had maybe a disability or accessibility background, and of course, the youth, which is what the staff was going for with the under thirty-five. And so, you could see where I've added to, I thought about splitting out the difference between designers and planners, where designers are looking very much just at the, the house itself and on its lot, whereas the planners are something we're trying to get at with section, oh goodness, four, four point four, up above, getting them to look more at that development in the situation of the town and how it applies to the OCP guidelines, the overall. And so, splitting that, those two members with, you know, either-or to being one with design qualifications, including but not restricted to architects, landscape architects, and design consultants. I struck heritage, because that's down below. And then, one member with professional urban planning qualifications, including but not limited to land use planning, environmental planning, or transportation planning disciplines. And I thought transportation planning might be important moving forward, particularly given section four point four. I added, then, one member from the community social services sector, serving young families, people with disabilities, and/or people on low income, and then keeping three members of the community at large. But then, I added in with preference given to those representing the student or youth, i.e. under thirty-five, family with schoolchildren and/or renter demographics, because at that point, I thought there's a lot of ones that we could hear from, but then if we pigeonhole each one, we run the risk of not getting one. But I thought that kind of gives the idea that, while we know currently on committees, we get a lot of people who are retired and have time, therefore, time to contribute back to their community, being able to try and pursue getting people from more of the buying actual single-family homes, or some of these new townhomes that are being built, might be valuable. So, I submit that for discussion.
Okay. So, I've got, this is on the points that have just been raised. I've got Mayor McNeil-Smith, then Councilor Rintoul, and then I'll come back to Councilor O'Keefe.
Thank you, Chair. And I like the, I like the thoughts and the thinking behind this. Perhaps a friendly amendment I might suggest is in your last point, with three members of the community at large, certainly there's, there's broader demographics there in terms of representing student or youth, family with schoolchildren. But I would, putting those demographics, I would include seniors. Seniors certainly have affordable housing issues in our community and certainly design interests, and if the move, if, the commenter, at this point, we don't have an amendment.
Yeah, I also just realized, in my point six, I have three members of community at large. It should still be four.
Councilor Rintoul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and to Councilor Duncan. Yeah, thank you. I was, I was going to just make note that staff had recommended trying to keep the odd number with respect to decision-making, et cetera, and some challenges possibly there. And so, the, you've addressed that, I think, with that comment. If, I'm comfortable with what's suggested. If anything, you know, had that been three members at large, I might have looked to go back to two members with the professional designations or qualifications, just to add that level of expertise in the industry. In the event one was absent on occasion, you hopefully would have the other one there. But I see, I take it you're most comfortable with that number being four down below and one up above?
Okay.
I, I think my, I'm happy with what you've suggested here. My preference would have been to have two members with the professional designation be maintained in this mix. Thank you.
Councilor O'Keefe?
Thank you. In regards to the membership, I'm not too bothered that we, whether we have an even number or not. So, and I agree with Councilor Rintoul's suggestion about having at least two people with professional designations. And the reason I'm not too bothered about having an even number is because it's ultimately council that is going to make the decision anyway. So, APC is an advisory board, and so, whether the vote is five to five or four to six, I, I don't know that that's an issue, is it?
So, Mayor McNeil-Smith, do you answer that question?
Yeah, a question for clarification through staff. A tie vote, a tie vote at APC would defeat the motion. So, APC does pass motions.
Okay.
And it is a staff, if I might comment further, it is a staff recommendation to, to go to a, to an odd number, and it, and an odd number is a best practice, followed by many, certainly nonprofit and other organizations. So, I would be keen to, to keep that. I have an additional comment, but I'll let you continue.
Okay. In, in that case, I might lean more towards keeping three members of community at large and bumping, having two with professional design qualifications. I like Councilor Duncan's amendment in, in regard to the community at large, because initially, I, you know, when we saw, it was stated, someone under thirty-five, I like the wording with preference given, because my feeling is that, you know, as staff noted, that APC is a board that is going to be looking at things from a very technical basis. So, we certainly need people with, with, with expertise technically and general experience as well. So, I wouldn't want us to be appointing someone just because they happen to be thirty-four years old, but maybe didn't have the, the depth of experience or knowledge that we would want on the committee. So, thank you.
I've got a speaker's list. I've got the mayor, then Councilor Fallon, and Councilor Garner.
Just a second comment.
Microphone? Thank you. In point two, one member with professional urban planning qualifications, including, and we have environmental planning, and then in the next point, number three, is one member with professional environmental background. I'm wondering if there will be some overlap there. I realize professional environmental background could be more than just environmental planning, but I do see some duplication there.
Councilor Fallon?
Thank you. I do like this mix. Just to go back to whether it's an odd number or an even number, if it turns out that everybody's in attendance, would that not be an opportunity for the chair not to vote? Through you to staff. So, so if there's ten members on the committee, including the chair, in that case, the chair wouldn't take the vote, and then there wouldn't be...
Our procedures are that the chair always votes.
So, the chair always votes. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Garner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the thought you've given to this, Councilor Duncan, and I really appreciate point four, the member of social services sector. I think that's really important. It's an often overlooked group, so that's a different take and look on things, so it's well brought up. Question through you to staff, if this was to carry forward, when are you thinking of implementing it?
So, be looking at completion of the current term anyways.
Okay, that was, that was my biggest concern, is it was going to be, what do we do, like, who's not, who's not saying still? So, okay, that answers that question. Great, thank you.
So, I'll jump in before we have another round, and a question to staff. I can't recall when we last had somebody with a professional heritage background on APC, and I'm wondering if, if we are frequently able to fill that role?
I can defer to, to Development Services staff as well on this, but, yeah, my recollection since being here, you know, since ninety-seven, I think it's always been a challenge. I think there's maybe been one time where we've been able to, to fill that slot. But other than that, Mr. Chair, no, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
So, the suggestion I'd make to committee, because I think it's been at least twenty years since we've been able to fill that one with somebody with that qualification, is we might leave it in there, one member with professional heritage background, but then say, "But if not available..." then say, but if not available, one member with professional design qualifications, et cetera. Because I think in practice, when council's been dealing with appointments, council has probably put in a member from the community at large, simply because there was nobody with those qualifications. At any rate, okay, going for another round, I'll start with the mayor and then Counselor O'Keefe.
Thank you. I, I agree with that point with regards to heritage. I'm wondering if we might put heritage back into number one or, or number two. And then that would allow us to have number one with two members and number five with four members, number six with four members.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you. So I also agree that the heritage person might be hard to find. However, I guess I still am in favor of leaving it as a standalone thing, rather than incorporate it with something else, along with the proviso, as Counselor Wainwright mentioned, that if we can't find anybody, we'll slot it in somewhere else. And the reason I'm thinking that is, maybe we need to give it a higher profile, so that if we actually advertise for that, that we might get people. And so I don't know if we've, we've done too much of that in the past, but if we give it a higher profile, maybe it might get, get more people. The other comment I had was, you know, we just went through a process of reconvening a, a new APC, some new terms of reference and some new guidelines. And what I'm wondering is, before we make a decision on amending who should be in the committee, whether it might be prudent to see how at least the first year goes, and to get some input from the APC or the liaison on the APC, to give us some feedback on how the deliberations have gone in terms of, you know, what we really needed was more of, more of these sorts of people or less of these sorts of people. So while I like us spending some time on this, I'm wondering if it's better to wait for at least a year to see how things go with the current composition on the APC, and then get their feedback or the liaison's feedback on where we think the gaps might be.
Anyone further? Mayor?
I think the, the staff report and the suggestion for the changes, apart from what Counselor Duncan has brought forward, were kind of a, a result of the experience we have had in recent years. You know, there's been informal dialogue with past APC members, some of the current APC members have served a number of years. And, and so I do think we are, you know, not just starting the idea, there has been, there has been comment and staff have brought this forward as a result of the input that they've had up until this time. I'm, I would be fine with referring this to, to APC if they, if the current APC members had any comment with regards to this makeup, that would be a shorter turnaround back to, back to council.
Okay, further discussion? Go ahead.
So I've been writing down people's comments as we go. Shall I read out where I got to? Okay. So, so I heard comments about keeping two members with professional qualifications. So I'm assuming they meant design qualifications, because we still hardly, we have technically four members with professional qualifications. I did not delete any professional qualifications, I merely split the first bullet. So I said one member with professional design qualifications, including but not restricted to architects, added heritage back in, landscape architects and design consultants. Bullet two remains the same, one member with professional urban planning qualifications, including but not limited to land use planning, environmental planning or transportation planning disciplines. For three, I made that one member with professional environmental science background to distinguish that, because I, I am not certain, but I thought that maybe is what was, that, that one was intended to add there for issues of environmental matters per section four point three. Four, I have changed to one member with professional or acceptable amateur heritage background. Because I thought, well, maybe part of the reason is that we're looking for somebody with professional heritage designation, but we've got, you know, amateur historians who could tell you all sorts of stuff about, you know, the history of Sydney and all sorts of things like that, and, you know, maybe that would help broaden that tent a little bit. And then by having heritage back in the first bullet, if you can't find somebody, you can get, I, I guess we could add that, sorry. One member with professional or acceptable amateur heritage background, if left vacant. Second member with professional design qualifications. Five and six remaining substantially the same, except for correcting my mathematical error and putting four members of community at large back in.
Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think at this point, I, I quite like the, the comment that was made with regards to getting some consultation from APC. I think the suggestion was, was made that we could look to, as opposed to forward this to council for consideration, first through readings, we could forward it to the APC first and look for their comment. I wouldn't be opposed to that going along with the, the, an alternate composition, as Counselor Duncan has, has recommended for their consideration and for their comment. But I think, I, I think, you know, given their, their volunteerism and their interest and their familiarity with this, I, I'd like to hear from, from them with some general comments.
Go ahead.
If I could then make a referral motion on this, on this, with that suggested motion, both to staff and APC, I think, given the nature of the changes, we'd certainly be interested in hearing any staff comment on this, as well as before or after it goes to, through to APC.
Okay, so we've got a motion to refer, do I have a secondary?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion, and this would be on referring it? I guess there's just one comment I'd like to make, so that it gets brought forward in the referral. One of the things I think that's been a benefit in the APC discussions is there being one or two members who've got a real estate background, and they're often making useful comments about lack of storage space or things that improve the suitability of the units for a particular demographic, that kind of thing. And we don't have that in here. In the past, I think we've picked up those members as members at large, but if, if we say that we've got a preference for the members at large being a certain, you know, representation, the likelihood of getting somebody with real estate experience matching one of those criteria goes quite a bit down. So, but APC can certainly comment on this. Anyway, so we've got the motion to refer, any final comments before I call the question? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, that's carried. Okay, so that item will be referred, and I guess then we will move on to four B, amendments to the council procedure bylaw number twenty-one eighty-two, and again, we've got a staff report. So committee, what's your pleasure?
I'll move that the staff proceed with the necessary public notice for consideration of bylaw number two one eight two, council and committee's procedure amendment number two, two thousand nineteen.
Do I have a secondary?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I, I guess the only thing I really want to speak to is number four, section six, time and location of regular council meetings. I've had some discussions in the community with people, and there is a bit of a concern for people who work getting to meetings on time and having the ability to speak to us at public participation. Seven o'clock gives people, since that is the only meeting we, we allow public participation, it limits people potentially that, say, don't work in Sydney, work in town, work in West Shore area, having to get home, grab a bite to eat, get to the meeting in time, it makes it difficult. So that is, and, and I think it's a reasonable concern that's been raised with me, because it's, we have a, you know, a fairly large working population here as well, so I think anybody that gets a limited access to us is, for me, is a bad thing, so I, I would not be in favor of changing that time, based on what I've been hearing. Thanks.
Okay. Further discussion? Counselor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to item nine, referring to section twenty-three, adjournment of council meeting, on the assumption then that if the meeting were to start at six P M., we're looking for an extension to take place, at what point, at eleven P M., to allow the meeting to go beyond eleven P M.? And currently, if I may, do we not do that extension currently to ten P M. or at ten P M.?
At ten thirty.
At ten thirty till eleven P M. Okay. I'm hoping we're not in a scenario where we're needing to use that if we're starting meeting at six P M. It would be much more comfortable for those in attendance, for staff and for council, if we were using ten P M. as opposed to eleven P M. But I'm certainly agreeable to letting it stand if, if no one else noticed that as perhaps something that might be of concern. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a question for staff on the wording of that twenty-three A. Council may continue a council meeting after eleven P M. only by an affirmative vote of the council members present. Does that imply a unanimous vote? That's what I thought. So if anybody objects, then the meeting does not continue after eleven. Anyway, that was just clarification. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Two comments, one to Counselor Rintul's point, if we agree to move the meeting from seven P M. to six P M., I would feel more comfortable with having the ten P M., given that we were seven to eleven before, seven to ten thirty. With regards to moving the meeting to six P M. versus, versus seven P M., it's noted in the staff report that eighteen out of twenty-three, so we did do a survey in Town Talk, we had twenty-three responses and eighteen out of, okay?
Online survey.
Oh, sorry, an online survey.
Thank you.
Eighteen out of the twenty-three responses. A question through the chair to staff, on those online responses, was there an opportunity for reasons, or was it just indicating in favor or not? And if there was an opportunity to give a reason, did any of the, the five who were not supportive indicate?
So as Counselor Garnett suggested, the comments that people made with respect to the ones that were not in support of the change did indicate just in fact what Counselor Garnett had said about work times and things like that, and not making enough time for workers to get home and get to the meeting on time. Some also said that they were okay with the six P M., but the ones that were not in favors were about the working, people working.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Chair. So I, I was initially in favor of switching the meeting till six o'clock, but Counselor Garnett brings up good point, and we've got that feedback. And while it's a minority of the feedback, I think that, you know, people, not everybody comes out to council meetings all the time, and those who do decide to come to a council meeting because there's some particular issue they have, or they want to speak to, or bring something to us, you know, I can see that it would be difficult for them to, to be here for, you know, for that. So when we, I, while we have done a survey, I mean, there's, people are probably, the people who are gonna come to council meeting probably months down the road are probably not even thinking about this. But at some point in time, some issue is gonna arise if they're gonna wanna come and speak to us, and if we can facilitate and remove barriers for people by coming, by having a seven o'clock meeting time, I, I'm okay with that. And I, I think that's a good reason. I'm changing my mind about the six o'clock time, I, I think we should keep it at seven o'clock.
Counselor Fallon?
I'll echo exactly what Counselor O'Keefe was saying, and we just were looking at APC and talking about bringing in younger members onto that committee, and I think if that is, if the start time of our council meeting could potentially be a stumbling block for younger demographic, working demographic to come and attend meetings, whether on an ongoing basis or because something is pique their interest or their needs, then I'm prepared to leave it at seven P M. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Duncan?
My one counterpoint to that would be whether those people are actually going to be able to come in the first place, simply 'cause I, when I think about the people I know, almost nobody has an actual nine to five job. I don't know how many people are not able to come because they got off at five, or even four. Most of the families I know are working opposite shifts, one has a night shift, one has a day shift, and if somebody wanted to come to council, they'd have to switch their shifts or take a day off, and they're gonna get, have to get a babysitter for their kids no matter what, whether it's at six P M. or seven P M. So I still don't know if we're getting many of those families, that might be some more of the people who are kind of older kids out of the house, much longer established jobs, older professionals who would be more likely to come in the first place, but I, and then lowering the barrier for them. But I don't know how much it will be lowering the, still the barrier for people under forty-five, so if that takes into consideration at all.
Counselor Rintul, then the mayor?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I would tend to agree, and I, I think there's also something to be said for the continuity in meeting times and, and not this, you know, trying to be at home and spin a wheel and wonder if it's at seven or six this week, and boy, I can be earlier, boy, I can be late. You know, my daughter plays soccer at five forty-five P M., and somehow I make it across Mackenzie and get her to the gorge at Hampton Park to play soccer. If someone wants to be there, they'll be there. So, you know, I think the continuity, the getting into the, the, the routine with the public, obviously there'd be some, some learning curve, but I think if there's something, you know, compelling, an opportunity to be here and participate, that, that, you know, people will, will get here to have their voices heard, and, and we encourage that. And I think the continuity is, is a key part of that, in terms of getting them out, and that, that routine for individuals who wanna participate in a council meeting or committee of the whole. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would concur with the, with the point of, in terms of continuity of, of meeting time, but also we've had good attendance at committee of the whole meetings at six P M., when there's been items of interest on the agenda. And as an employer, for the last twenty-seven years, employees, if something is important, whether it's a medical appointment or what have you, are able to, you know, leave an hour early or, or, or make that, make that appointment if it's a unique situation where they have something on the agenda. So I, I would be in favor of, of this amendment to the, to the bylaw.
So I'm gonna suggest we've had a pretty good discussion on this particular point, and we should test the committee's will. So we've currently got a motion on the floor to proceed with the, the public notice and consideration of the bylaw. To test council's will on this, I need a motion to amend the bylaw to leave it at seven P M. as opposed to six P M., which is what's currently in there. But that's not an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. So I'm actually looking, I think, for the mover and secondary to withdraw that motion to provide the opportunity for direction on the starting time for the meeting, if that would be acceptable.
As a point of order, if, if the motion isn't carried with the six P M. start time, is it not... As a point of order, if, if the motion, uh, isn't carried, uh, with the, uh, six P M start time, does it not provide an opportunity then for it to be reintroduced?
Um, then yes, uh, then a motion could be made to bring it forward. I'll confess, I do have a comment about section four, which I'd like to discuss anyway, but, um. Uh, I think we should finish with the discussion about the starting time for the meeting and get that behind us. So, again, I'm, uh, go ahead.
Sorry, through the chair, we, we have a motion on the floor for the, all of the, and all of the bylaw amendments.
Yeah. That's correct, with six o'clock.
With six o'clock.
Right.
Um, so I, I would be willing to, uh, to have a vote on that, um, but I would like to make an amendment. Um, to those, uh, to that to change from eleven P M to ten P M on that one part of the bylaw.
Okay, um.
Now, we could also, we could also have an, a proposed amendment or test an amendment to the time, or we could call the question, I mean.
Yep, um, okay, so, uh, would somebody like to, let's start by, would somebody like to make a motion that the, um, bylaw be amended to, uh, six A to show a seven o'clock start time? Uh, Counselor Garnett?
Just as I'm reading this, I'm wondering if, reading the recommendation and it's a, a public notice for consideration, I'm wondering if this is the stage to even do this at?
We could have, um, all this discussion at, uh, like, it'll go to council, council would give it first reading, second reading. And we could propose all the amendments at second reading and have the discussion at council instead of now. But we've already had most of the discussion, so I think it would be, it would be more efficient if we actually made those decisions, uh, tonight. Uh, rather than repeating the discussion at council.
Okay, in that case, I'll move an amendment to keep the meeting for council meetings to start at seven P M.
Okay, and do I have a secondary for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, now, we've already had a lot of discussion, so, um, I'll call the question on the amendment to, uh, keep the council meetings starting at seven o'clock. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so that one didn't carry. Um, Mayor, you had an amendment to propose?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to propose that we, um, move the time from eleven P M to ten P M.
Okay, so this, uh, was in, uh, section twenty-three, um, twenty-three A, um, to change that eleven P M to ten P M.
I'll second that.
Uh, so that's moved and seconded. Um, we've already had some discussion. Any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? No, so one opposed. So, that's carried. Okay, um, are there any further amendments anyone else would like to propose? Okay, um, seeing none, I have one that I, um, wanted to raise. Uh, the proposal is to strike out section four, which is duty to preserve order at meeting. And that is, uh, a responsibility of the chair under Robert's rules anyway. The section being struck out says the mayor or other person presiding has a responsibility and duty to preserve order at council meetings. And as such, has the authority to prohibit video or tape recordings of the meeting. And the staff report suggested that since, um, all the meetings were, uh, videoed for webcasting anyway, there was no need to put that in. My experience in the past, we haven't had a problem very often, but every once in a while, um. We'll have something that is attracting media attention or otherwise. And we can have people setting up cameras and it is somewhat disruptive. So, I don't think it is unreasonable, um, to simply have, essentially have a note that whoever's chairing the meeting can prohibit video or tape recordings if it's necessary to preserve order. Um, I think that, uh, Robert's rules would give that authority anyway. I see staff.
Actually, that authority is under the community charter as well.
Okay, so it's, we can strike this because we don't need it? Okay, that's different, then I won't, uh, won't consider that a problem. So, are there any other, um, proposed amendments? If not, then, uh, I'll go back to that main motion, which was, uh, to, um, proceed with a necessary public notice for consideration of bylaw number. Twenty-one eighty-two, et cetera, with the two amendments that were, um, proposed. So, that's been moved and seconded and we're all clear on what we're voting on? Sorry, one amendment. Um, that's correct, yeah. And that amendment is the, um. Adjournment time from eleven o'clock to ten o'clock. Um, Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff, so, just a question on procedures. So, this is committee of the whole, so this recommendation will go to council and therefore it will get its readings and then go through public?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, staff?
Actually, uh, the public advertisement will go first, then council will have an opportunity to give first, second, and third reading.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, the committee's recommendation will go to council, then the others?
Yep. Okay, um, so that's clear and I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? And one opposed, so that's carried. Okay, so now moving on, um, to the last item on our agenda. Development variance permit application number DV, um, one zero zero two eight five. This is, uh, one zero three seven nine, one zero three eight three, and one zero three eight seven, Al Bay Road. This is to, um, retroactively approve the construction of two sets of beach stairs and the alteration of an existing set of beach stairs. And there is no presentation tonight, um, but, uh, Mr. Robbins is in the audience, uh, and available to answer questions if need be. Um, we've got a staff report and we've also got correspondence from the proponent. So, uh, committee, what's your preference? Do we have questions? Does someone want to make a motion? Uh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
I would move the recommendation that the development variance permit application number DV one zero zero two eight five be denied and. That the applicant remove the illegally constructed stairwells and stairwell alterations and that the retaining wall and upland soils be returned to the original state. With the only landscaping feature on the seven point six meter natural boundary setback area being the previously existing set of stairs. In the seawall at one zero three eight three, Al Bay Road and one paved walkway in the rear yard of each property. Uh, bracket which are to terminate at the top of the seawall bracket as formally approved under DP one zero zero seven four five.
Do I have a secondary?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Counselor Duncan?
There we go. Um, my concern with, uh, getting them to remove these stairs is that I believe the property owners will still want the stairs. And all that will happen is that they will come back and fill out and go through another permit application and rebuild them. Therefore, we will have forced them to disturb that section three times rather than the one that they've already done. And it does look, the primary concern for me was the archaeology, which it does look like was, was covered. Um, I guess that issue would be whether or not we would have granted allowing these stairs to go through the wall in the first place due to the environmental values. Um, I think the defense that perhaps these Latin owners don't deserve stairs the way everybody else is, is rather moot since most of these were already constructed. And like, these were constructed in the sixties and the eighties and it very well might not have allowed them to build stairs through here because those things were built back before anybody cared about environmental values. And it may very well be that they just shouldn't be allowed to. Um, many of those seawalls probably shouldn't be there. But in this case, I am worried about doing additional harm and. I suppose we've passed the question of being able to talk, ask the developer, but, um. My sense is, do, do we want them to pull them out and then put them back in and disturb it three times to be punitive? Or would going with the alternate recommendation of. Of basically having a fine, as they've already kind of admitted a mea culpa, would be the least harm to the environment here.
So, um, Counselor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I also agree with Counselor Duncan that, um, in terms of. Uh, concerns about disrupting the whole area again. Uh, things that seemed to be, um, concerns in this case were archaeological concerns, which, uh, it looks like those, those had been, those had been addressed. Um, preserving three Douglas firs, um, and it looks like, uh, those, those were preserved. Um, blue hair and nests and, um, it seemed like all of those things, uh, were, were taken care of. And so, the, the issue was the wall, uh, or the stairs that didn't get, get a permit. So, I appreciate staff's concern about, you know, this is ecologically sensitive area and we need to be careful about. People just going in and thinking they can do these things and offer, ask for forgiveness later. Um, however, I do feel that, you know, they did cover off those ma- major things in terms of the Douglas firs, the archaeological concerns, protecting, um, the trees, blue hair and nests. And I also have concerns about disrupting that whole area again, if stairs have to come out. So, I, you know, maybe the, the second option in terms of some sort of penalty or fine, um, is something that, uh, I would be willing to consider.
Counselor Rento?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and I think those are both, you know, good points that have been raised. Uh. I, I'm left trying to piece together from the submission, um, from, from the applicant, uh, and the staff report. Uh, and I think I land at the same place, if I'm not mistaken, where Counselor O'Keefe is, and that is that. Um, the only thing missing, I believe, was the original, the original application. Having, uh, not submitted the application, it appears as if, uh, the applicant completed all the steps that Counselor O'Keefe noted. Uh, so had this applicant received, uh, permission initially, um, I take it there would have been nothing that was, was missed here in the part of the applicant. And we wouldn't be having this discussion at all. Is that correct to staff?
I'll defer to, uh, Development Services Staff first.
Through the chair to Counselor Rento, um, as, as constructed, those stairs would have required a variance, they're a structure in the required seven point five meter setback. So, it would have come before council at that time. Um, so this discussion would, I suppose, be happening at council anyway, regardless of the time.
And just that one component of the project would have come before council, uh, with respect to the variance you referred to?
That's correct. So, the, the stairs would have required the variance being a structure in the setback area, but the development permit itself, uh, that's a staff-approved permit.
Thank you.
So, I've got Counselor Garnett, then the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, with regards to the, I, I, I do see what's been said beforehand about just having to take them out, disturbing, but. But as far as them being rebuilt again, it would also be a variance that anybody who owns a home has to come before, so we'd also have the power and the decision to let them build it, so it's not like they can just go do it. Um, my concern here is that. If this is done, then who's going to stop? Everybody else is going to do the same thing. Why wouldn't they? And then they come back after, after it's been done. It's an environmentally sensitive area in Roberts Bay and it needs to be protected and these rules are in place for a reason. I, I've read the submissions and I, I, as an experienced developer and I, I have a hard time understanding how this got overlooked. I, 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 it's going to cost money, yes. Um, decision was made to go ahead and build it without permission. Um, I, as far as having the wall, the stairs taken out and everything that's been done. There is a certain level of trouble with that for me, but the overall, we have to establish that we have these rules in place in these areas and that people have to abide by them, developers and homeowners. And I don't think we can look the other way on this, so I, I think we need to support the recommendation from staff. I think it's, it's, there's been a lot of time and effort put into it and, um, I don't see going the other way. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you. I, um, the, the reason for my not supporting it is giving consideration to if this had come forward as a variance request. Um, when the original variance, uh, when the original development permit was, uh, was applied for, um, I would have opposed because, um. Uh, it is an environmentally sensitive area and, uh, while decades ago or at some period in the past, perhaps before, there were these sorts of regulations. Um, other stairwells were built. Um, it, it's a variance now because we consider the environmentally sensitive area best practices to be not to have stairs, you know, in the situation. So, I wouldn't have supported it, uh, had it come forward as a variance at the time of original application. Um, and I wouldn't support it now and, um, I would, if, if we were to, uh, to deny it and, and an applicant was to come forward again, uh, at a future time, another homeowner, uh, I would deny it at that time as well.
Further discussion? Counselor Fallon?
Thank you. Um, I looked at this, uh, in the first, uh, read-through and then, uh, with the submission from the. From the applicant and thought. Yes, there were, uh, some parts to it that he's ticked all the boxes, but I think really and truly when it comes down to it, uh, given that there is a variance that would have had to be requested. These stairs today wouldn't happen and although there are going to be consequences to going back in and disturbing the area, I think it's lesser of an issue. I don't want to start setting precedents and have others come along and say, they've got it, we can get it. I remember quite clearly when. The wa- the waterfront walkway on Lockside, the south end, uh, was, um, wrecked through winter storms. And we had originally put those great big cement blocks there for, to hold up the pathway. Well, we couldn't rebuild it like that because that no longer is acceptable to use concrete, uh, on the waterfront in that manner. And the cost to do what needs to be done now at the time wasn't fitting in with our budget. So, I think our sensibilities have shifted and changed over the decades and, uh, what was allowed or what was not a concern in years past is a concern today. So, I think despite the disturbance, I think it is wisest of us to turn around and say, no, deny the request and have the steps removed.
Further discussion? Counselor Rento?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I certainly understand the, the comments and, and appreciate, uh, that, that someone counsel, you know, would not have supported the, uh, the variance had it come forward. Uh, with respect to precedent, I think there's an opportunity in, in staff option two that perhaps helps, you know, mitigate the, that, that matter and, and that's around. Um, you know, forfeiture, part of the landscape deposit. Uh, I don't think the staff report articulated the total amount of the deposit, but the applicant noted, I think it was forty-seven thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, through to staff.
And we've, that would be another deposit, forty-seven thousand, more or less, approximately?
Yeah, thank you. So, there's a signi- significant value, you know, there, um, you know, in the note here, that the range of, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars. I think it's, it's a substantial, uh, forfeiture that would be required and would address the issue of precedent. Uh, because like Counselor Duncan, I'm concerned about the prospect of going in and, and disturbing, uh, the area again. Uh, so if this, um, you know, does fail, um, like Counselor Dunk, excuse me, O'Keefe noted the same thing, that, that that option two is likely something that I would be comfortable with. Thank you.
Further discussion? Um, I guess I haven't said anything, so I'll, um, contribute my thoughts to the thing. So, um, yeah, I've been on council a fair while and, uh. Really have not seen a lot of, um, requests for, uh, retroactive approval. But, uh, this is actually the fourth, um, this year and like, we're nine, nine months into it. So, I. Um, so I do feel that we really should make a point that this isn't acceptable. The previous ones were your basic homeowner made a mistake kind of thing. Um, which, you know, is, is, uh, maybe it's just coincidence that we had that many of those. But this is a case where it's an experienced developer. And, um, I would expect that the, um, people involved in the construction project were experienced as well. Um, and the plans actually get registered on title. Uh, so I, I'm really not seeing, um, any reasonable, um, expectation that this might have simply been a mistake. Like, I, I would have to say I expect an experienced developer to be aware of this. Um, with respect, and I, I do appreciate the point being made about, um, taking them out. Uh, will create some additional disturbance. And there are a lot of other, um, stairs down to the beach, uh, generally in Roberts Bay. Um, our environmentally sensitive area guidelines aren't just about, uh, whether you would have stairs in there or not. They're also about how the stairs would be constructed, looking for things like, um, uh, permeable materials and such. And these stairs, if we were going to have approved them, wouldn't have been of this design. They, these are your, your basic impervious concrete stairs. This is exactly the opposite of what our design guidelines would be looking for. So I appreciate they've done a proper job dealing with the, um, uh, the archaeological concerns on the site. But, um, you, you know, that, I think the, the design of the stairs is also one of the aspects of it. And if it had come forward with a request for a variance, um, I certainly would have been, uh, I wouldn't have been supporting a set of stairs like those. So, um, I, I do appreciate the point that's being made that, um, the option of giving them the variance but, um, making them forfeit ten to fifteen thousand out of their landscape deposit, that is a pretty significant slap on the wrist. Um, but on the other hand, I think making the point that, uh, uh, people need to respect the, um, uh, the development permit, the plans that get registered on title. And if you're looking to do something like this, particularly in one of our environmentally sensitive areas, you need to apply in advance. So I'm not going to, well, I'll support the motion that's being made, um, which is to tell them to take it out. Further, uh, discussion? I guess I shall just call the question, all in favor of the motion? Those opposed? So two opposed. And that completes our, uh, business for, um, committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn. So the second?
So that's moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And, uh, we'll take a short recess as we swap chairs and then we'll have a council meeting.